All right, let's go ahead and get started with the November 18th City Council meeting, and start with the pledge allegiance.
(inaudible) (inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Christina, can you call the roll?
Clark, David, Fish, Jorgensen, Cole, Parsons, Mayor Lumbergh.
Here. Any changes or corrections to the agenda as presented? If not, could I have a motion to approve as presented?
Second.
Motion is second to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have two meeting minutes from October 31st and November 4th. If I could have a motion to approve those.
So moved. Second.
Motion is second to approve the minutes from October 31st and November 4th as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bills and claims were presented in the agenda. If I could have a motion to approve those.
(inaudible).
Motion is second to approve the bills and claims as presented in the agenda. Any questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Anyone wishing to address the council, this is your timeframe. No one? Okay, next on the agenda is, excuse me, we have Clark Meyer from Ellison Eastern Railroad to give us a brief update on the railroad activities as they pertain to the city of Brandon.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Clark Meyer. I'm the president of the Ellison Eastern Railroad. Appreciate the invitation to come before you and offer an update on our business and activities as it pertains to the city of Brandon. Just a quick history lesson, for those that you don't know, the Chicago Northwestern originally owned the line, and it ran from Worthington, Minnesota to Mitchell, South Dakota, and that was in the late 1880s, of which the city of Brandon was built around. More recently, in 1987, Sweden Construction purchased the line from Ellis, which is a small town just on the west edge of Sioux Falls, to Manly, Minnesota. About 1989, Aspen Boulevard in Brandon was gravel. The city approached Ellison Eastern and asked the intent of the line, and in 1989 already we had informed the city that it's active, and it will still be used. In 2011, Aspen Boulevard had further improvements, as you see now going into Aspen Park, and a brand-new concrete at-grade crossing was installed. In 2017, we purchased the assets of the Minnesota Southern, which was the other segment of the Chicago Northwestern line that runs from Manly to Worthington, Minnesota, thus making our operations contiguous from Ellis to Worthington, Minnesota. And then recently, later in 17, we were approached by the city once again, and we discussed the crossings at Holly. We again communicated our intentions, we're planning to be used, and for that reason, the new crossing at Holly has safety arm gates that are going to be installed this next spring. Whenever we've been approached by the city, we've been great partners in allowing the infrastructure in our right-of-way. We've even done, I think it's four open cuts versus horizontal boring across our tracks, which has saved the city cost dollars in their infrastructure projects. Just a little bit of railroad operation education. Ellison Eastern is a Class III short-line railroad. We operate locally. We do local switching and short-line hauls. Our company, Sweden Construction, has 20 employees and their families that call the Brandon area their home, and of course, we're an active member of the Chamber of Commerce. When I say we're a short-line, the long hauls are done by a Class I railroad. In this case, it's the Burlington Northern, the BNSF. They bring the long hauls in from wherever they come from into the Lawrence Yard, just off Rice Street. We interchange with the BNSF and do the last-mile haul. As some people are probably familiar, if you go down Rice Street between South Dakota 100 and I-229, there are three crossings, and of those, one of those is ours, one of them's the BNSF, and then one's a siding. I think it's important to note that when you see a train's not always a train. We do not typically have 100-car-long ethanol or grain trains that operate our line, and it's important to note that that's the type of traffic that we don't foresee going through the city of Brandon. I'll get to more of that later. Over the past five years, as the city of Sioux Falls keeps pushing more businesses out to the east, we've had three new businesses in the last five years. Everybody knows about the new, the TGN recycling facility is a customer of ours, Tamarack Drywall gets in Sheerock, and Railto Road, who does transloading right off Rice Street. As those businesses grow, we do use the main line currently as car storage and a staging area to service our businesses. An example would be a longer train would come to town, we'd interchange it, and we may hold cars on our main line before the customer's able to take them. Another part of that operation is, we currently are hauling about 2,000 rail cars a year, and that's just during the eight months of summer, and that's going from our Corson Sand facility, just north of Corson, back into our operations in Sioux Falls. We have, we actually run on the BNSF main line to complete that operation, and if anyone's ever seen that operation, typically that's two locomotives and 22 sand cars is what we've been sized that at. It typically is during business hours. We don't do overnight crews or anything like that with our crews. The reason we're here today, the Corson Sand reserves will be depleted in the next five to 10 years. We have identified future reserves, and they are in southwest Minnesota, right along our rail line. So when we have the line open and operational, the train that is currently servicing Corson would now go to the pit in southwest Minnesota and through Brandon to bring those sand cars into our, from the new sand source into our operation. So what's going to be happening? The citizens will see an increased activity over the next five years. They'll start to see some track rehabilitation, some vegetation control, and it may include some car storage. It'll be five years or after that train activity may begin, and want to keep in mind that it will be perceived, I anticipate it being shorter trains, and it'll be 15 miles an hour or less, and typically, it's, we are not operating in the middle of the night. I want to talk about, to help with the rehabilitation process, we have applied for a federal CHRISI grant, and CHRISI stands for Consolidated Rail Infrastructure and Safety Improvements. And if successful, this grant will be used to upgrade six miles of light rail between Magnolia and Adrian, but it'll also be used to rehabilitate the line between Brandon and Manly. We have been awarded and been successful in a STC grant. STC grant is a Special Transportation Circumstances Grant. What that grant is, just for backstory, there is three states in the United States that don't have Amtrak rail service, and so the federal government puts funds into a special fund. South Dakota, Wyoming, and Alaska can use those funds for rail improvements. We were successful on a $4 million grant, and that's going to be used to rehabilitate three big Sioux River bridges in the Sioux Falls area, and the one will be just on the west edge of Brandon here. Just for information's sake, we've, in doing all this, have discovered that is the oldest bridge in South Dakota, constructed in 1887. So as we begin, I want to talk about what our initiatives are going to be to be a good corporate citizen in the city of Brandon. We have some bullet points here of what we're going to initiate. We are going to collaborate with the Brandon School Systems in offering a rail safety program called Operation Lifesaver. We actually have certified instructors on our staff, and we're going to work with the school systems to try getting rail safety education in front of those kids. Includes everything from playing on parked rail cars to walking on right-of-ways to at-grade crossing. There's also a phase of it that helps new drivers training, being more safe at rail crossings. Before any train operations begin, we intend to run a PR campaign to heighten crossing awareness and safety, and then we plan on having our crews guard all crossings, at least for the first month, to, even though it's not F-30 mandated, but we want to make sure that since it's going to be a change in activity, we want no incidences at those crossings. We've also been assisting Dennis Olson and the Brandon Economic Development Corporation in revitalizing a regional rail authority, and when that, the economic development gets the rail authority revitalized, so there is a Minnehaw County rail authority, and they've been trying to revitalize it. We're encouraging them to do that, and we want, we're going to recommend to them that the city of Brandon have a representative seat on that board, and that rail authority would oversight any rail activity in Minnehaw County. So, one thing I'm asking for tonight, in seek of our CHRISI grant, we are asking for a letter of support from the city of Brandon in our application. If this grant's successful, we calculate that it'll take 450,000 semi-truck loads off the road over the next 20 years. We have asked for and been successful on letters from Minnehaw County, South Dakota DOT, and every jurisdiction along our rail line that we operate in, including several businesses and shippers. And we hope by, if you can offer this letter of support, it'll continue to solidify and strengthen a very solid relationship that we believe already exists between Ellison Eastern and the city of Brandon.
Thanks, Clark. Any questions from the council? Clark?
I don't have any questions. I just want to say thank you for coming and giving us the details and facts. I think it's really important to get that out there and disperse some of the rumors that are so far off of what the intent is. So thank you very much for doing that.
I would also like to say thank you. We appreciate you coming. Also, I'd like you to tell people how many cars, if you haul 22 cars a day, how many trucks a day would be equal to that?
(inaudible). Thank you, Tim. An easy way to math is between four and six truckloads go into every rail car, because of course it depends on the size of the truck, but a dump truck would be six, but a larger semi would be four, so easy math is 100 trucks out of traffic every day that the 22 cars go through. I used to give tours of our quarry years ago, and I would always ask who's been stopped by a train on Minnesota Avenue. People would raise their hand, and when I told them that's 100 cars, or 100 trucks that are no longer in traffic for the couple of minutes that you wait, it seems to, people feel like they have some, it's a good reason to wait.
And Clark, I'm glad you pointed out that your trains are like 22 cars and not 100 cars. Like, we do run into those on Rice, and that can be a wait, so appreciate that.
And then the other question is, how many, how many trains per day would you guesstimate?
Yeah, so typically, so if it's replaced our Corson operations, we go out empty and come back loaded once a day, is how we do the operation now, and at 2,000 cars a year, we, it's, you know, we're not even operating, it'd be 100 days of hauling. So sometimes we only get five days a week, sometimes three days a week, a lot of factors, but typically once a day.
Thank you, Clark.
Thank you, Mayor.
Do we need a motion to give that letter of support?
You don't, you don't have that as an intended item. It was just an update, so I will put that on the next council agenda. Next on the agenda, we have a public hearing on the on-and-off sale liquor license renewals for 2020, list of which is included in your agenda. Questions, or Brian, anything? Christina?
I believe Coffee Cup is in attendance, and then Sunshine gave a letter on page 16.
Okay, any action we take on that, Brian?
Yep, you'll need to, you'll need to approve those liquor license renewals.
Okay, can I have a motion?
(inaudible).
Pardon?
I say the representative from Coffee Cup is here.
Okay, would like to speak to us?
(inaudible).
If you have any questions for him.
Yes, I do. If you could come up, please.[1028.01][1028.01](laughing). Well, you know, mistakes happen, and we understand that. Can you just fill us in on, you know, if you've made any changes or what kinds of...
Okay, I'm just here trying to figure out, okay, so did that, we apparently failed a sting or something like that last year, is what I was told by my district manager. So, okay, I did not receive any information on this as a store manager there, so I'm...
(inaudible).
It was sometime within the last year.
Okay, well, just tell us what, how you check for ideas.
We have a policy of anything, anybody that looks 40 or under, we always card for them. We have an outside company called a bars program that comes through twice a month, just to make sure that we are carding people. If you card them, they throw you a green card, which means you get a $25 bonus onto your next paycheck. A red card means you failed. Two of those within a year, you're terminated. So that's usually kind of our strong policy. It's worked pretty good as far as I've been understood here, so, yeah, when in doubt, card. That's always been our policy, so.
We like to be carded, trust me.
So.
Thank you.
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion is second to approve the on-and-off sale liquor license renewals for 2020 as listed. Any questions, further questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number C2, we have a package off-sale liquor license request from DH Ventures, doing businesses Tailgaters. I could have a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Second. Motion is second to approve the package off-sale liquor license for Tailgaters. Any questions or comments?
Do any of our other restaurants have this, or is this the only one?
Steakhouse used to.
I don't think there's anybody currently, but the steakhouse did at one point.
They want this primarily for folks that are staying at the motels? And so is it everything, or is it just beer and wine?
It's everything.
Everything, okay.
(inaudible).
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number C3, we have a first reading of ordinance number 595, which is amending Brandon's signed regulation ordinances. Brian?
Correct. Menzos adds signed regulations, if you look on page 20 and 21 for the NRC, district is primarily where, what it affects.
Any questions from the council? Not, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion is second to approve the first reading of ordinance 595. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The golf committee report looks to be the next item on the agenda.
Before we get to that, I guess I question Brian on those CIP lists, do we want to revise some of those dates?
We could.
I guess I would just ask them.
Yeah, I'll sit down with Andrew.
Look at that and then look at dates for the, what we're going to do with the flood damage?
Yep.
Okay.
Chuck, I would look to you to review your committee's recommendation.
So on the golf committee report, if you recall, the last time we had recommended to the council that we proceed with an RFP, after reviewing that, per this memo, we're really cutting that timeframe really short, which concerned this committee, so we're coming back with another recommendation that the city continue to operate the golf course in 2020 with the current full-time staff, and that the additional recommendation is that we pursue the RFP process, probably beginning in July of 2020, and if that's accepted and approved, that maybe that could start in January of 2021. The committee would also like to recommend to the, to the city that we consider hiring a consultant to provide recommendations to the staff to possibly improve operations for the course in 2020. So I appreciate the committee working on that. I would hope that the council supports this recommendation.
Any questions for the committee on their recommendations?
I have a quick question. I appreciate, yeah, thank you to the committee, because I like, I like this, so the RFP would come out in July, and then we'd, and so it would just, and then we'd have like, what, 30 days or whatever's typical, and then from there?
Yeah, we, we got ahold of Sioux Falls' RFP for their management firm, and mirroring their timeline, they start at the end of July with the contract becoming effective in January, so it'd be about a five-month process. We'd advertise, and then we'd, you know, we'd, we'd kind of follow their, their basis, so usually about 30 days for firms to submit, and then we'd review it for a while, maybe do some interviews if, if the council wanted to or the committee wanted to, and then what ended up happening, I think they had two months, if I remember right, in their RFP for contract negotiations. So that's, that's the timeframe that we were missing in ours.
And the other good thing that this does, Vicki, is it gives us ample time, should we choose to go down this route, to let whatever firm may be chosen to do their due diligence in the off-season, hiring and just all that. The other way that we proposed to the council was just cutting things too close. So I would recommend, or make a motion, that we approve this recommendation.
Motion is second to approve the recommendation from the golf course committee. As Chuck summarized, I won't repeat it, but you have the recommendations on that. The one thing I would note, any contracts that we enter in for 2020 is, that would be approved by the separate item by the, this governing board, so you're not, you're not setting yourself in stone on anything there, and it'll be a separate line item. Any other questions from the council?
I just want to reiterate, just so it's clear, we're still moving forward with the RFP, the timetable's just changing, so we don't have to recreate the wheel in the spring or summer and go through motions for an RFP again. We just need to change the timetable.
All those in favor are accepting the motion to accept the golf committee's recommendation, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a formal bid on our golf cart for this year. It looks to be the low, the low responsible bid from Easy Go Golf Courts, Miller &amp; Sons, for $38,010 a year for 60 carts. Any questions for Andrew on the, on the proposal? If not, I entertain a motion to accept the bid from Easy Go.
So moved.
Motion is second to approve the bid from Easy Go Cars for $38,010. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much, everybody. I would just like to add one thing, Mayor, that now that we've approved going forward that the city operating the course for 2020, and we're upgrading the fleet, I would hope that that calms any fears that the public has about how we're going to operate, and they could go out and buy their golf passes.
Andrew, thanks so much for all your work on getting that put together. Really appreciate it.
Next, we have a resolution 2919 to set the 2020 swimming pool rates. Questions? All right, entertain a motion to approve those as listed.
So moved.
Motion is second to approve the 2020 swimming pool rates under resolution 2919. Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, we have several pickup truck bids that we need to approve. We'll do these all in one motion. One is, these are under the state bid. One of these recommendations is from Lamb Chevrolet for a 3/4 ton pickup for $30,169, and the other is from Wagner Auto for a half-ton pickup for $22,967. I can have a motion to approve those two bids from the state bid listing. Motion is second to approve the pickup bids, as I delineated. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
David, you've waited a long time, so thank you.
Next, we have, we need an authorization to change our protocol on our police vehicles. We previously approved the ordering of two police vehicles that are no longer in production.
Correct.
So we will amend our request there, and we will go with another state bid to approve two Ford interceptors for $72,104. Can I have a motion for that?
Motion.
Motion is second to approve the two Ford interceptor police vehicles in lieu of the ones that are not being produced anymore. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. First reading of ordinance 598, the ambulance service.
Who wants to have someplace to go? I don't know. Man, he could just roll on here.
This is the first reading for the revisions to the ambulance ordinance based on the Minnehaw County ordinance. We've gone through them a number of times. Chuck Parsons and Brent Bastian were on the committee to review them. Any questions?
Yep, the timeframe, if you, on the bottom of the ordinance, first reading is tonight, second reading is December 2nd. It would then be published in the paper.
December 11th.
Thank you.
Effective January 1st.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the first reading of ordinance 598. Further questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the 2020 contract of the fire department in the city of Brandon. Looks like there's, we passed that with two separate dollar amounts. One is for equipment.
Correct. Once, the $103,070 is for operation and maintenance of the department, and then the second amount of $128,298 is for capital equipment replacement.
So we have a total of $231,998.
Correct.
Is the dollar amount with the 2020 fire department contract, with a lot of other stuff involved with it. If I could have a motion to approve that contract?
So moved.
Motion is second to approve the 2020 fire contract with the Brandon Fire Department in the amount of 231,998. Any questions?
Yes, so that goes up by the CP.
Um, yes, so that goes up by the CPI or?
It goes up by the CPI, that our levy goes up, that is certified every year by the county, plus growth. So whatever our levy goes up, it's the same percentage for their, their numbers.
Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution thirty-dash nineteen, animal license fee. Can I have a motion to approve the animal license fee as presented? Was it five dollars, Christina?
Second.
Motion is second to approve the animal, or ordinance, resolution thirty nineteen, animal license fee of five dollars. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution, resolution thirty-one nineteen is authorizing no parking on North Walnut Street.
This is up in the industrial park to the, a block west of Marmont, so it would run from Marmont Storage Yard across Hemlock to the north municipal limits in the Rolven Park.
We had forgotten this, the last thing.
Correct.
Move to approve.
Motion is second to approve the, uh, resolution thirty-one nineteen, authorizing no parking on North Walnut Street. Any other questions from the council? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution thirty-two nineteen, to reimburse the core area of Phase One project in an amount not to exceed six million dollars. If I can have a motion to approve that? Second?
Second.
Motion is second to approve resolution thirty-two dash nineteen, any questions?
So we, um, issue the bonds and then we just pay ourselves back?
Correct, we're anticipating the construction to start next year, so we will, we will obviously sell the bonds after the bids are let. We are incurring costs now with engineering and design, so once those bonds are sold, we will reimburse ourselves to the general fund the amount that we paid upfront.
Any further questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D two is a discussion on forming of a benefits work group by the city administration and council.
Yep, uh, getting back to, we had a, the insurance working group, benefits working group, for a number of years, it included two representatives from the city council, and then voluntary participation from a representative from each department, so I think there's five departments currently, if I remember right. So just to get together to review, um, the different options and benefit packages, this is not a negotiation, et cetera, so we're just looking for some volunteers. Nothing to be done at the council at this point in time until we get the volunteers from the staff, and we'll talk about that at tomorrow's department meeting. If the council wants to move forward, if you don't want to move forward with it, then we'll let it drive.
I, I do like that we set a budget, when we went through our budget hearings, I, I do think it's important that we continue with that process and have this group put in place, so I would certainly be in favor of it.
Could I have a motion or anything?
No, we'll just, uh, what we'll do is proceed with, at the next meeting, we'll get the volunteers from staff, and then the two council members want a volunteer to be honored to be appointed by the mayor. And then at that point in time, a motion to, to form the committee with those members.
Wouldn't entertain any pros or cons to forming the benefit group right now?
I think, I think it would be worthwhile to see what they come up with.
At this point, all that can really be done is, is segregating out some priorities of, of what the desires are with staff, in my opinion, because we can't look at any plans, options, costs, grandfather, not grandfathered, until we're in that quoting range ninety days out. So it's a little premature, but there's some things that could be talked about, and at least the discussion started.
Okay. Employ relationships are always a very, very important part of the, any governing board. So I think it's a good idea to proceed forward with that idea. Brian, you can start the process. Under streets, uh, we have a work report, and then we have a wage adjustment for Dale Kerber to twenty-six dollars and forty cents an hour. I can have a motion to approve that wage adjustment?
So moved.
Motion is second to approve the wage adjustment for Dale Kerber to twenty-six dollars and forty cents an hour. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. E three, we have Holly Boulevard Pay Application Number Four from First Rate Excavate in the amount of four hundred and seven thousand and three dollars and seven cents.
Move to approve.
Motion is second to approve Pay App Number Four to First Rate Excavate. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I will just note on that pro, on, for, that is the Holly project by Casey's, I guess I'll refer to it. There's two contractors involved in that project, First Rate Excavating and H and W. There's a lot of work to be completed by, uh, both carriers. First rate, based on the pay applications, is approximately sixty-two percent done with their portion of the project, which their total portion of the project is just under two-point-three million. H and W is about a third completed, which their portion of the project is about four-point-five million. So there, I just wanted the public to know, there's a lot of work to be done right away next spring. So those projects will be continuing into the spring, and we'll do our best to get us first on the list there. Item number E four is the sale of a Boss V plow. We had a bid, I guess I'll call it, of three hundred dollars from Rod Hooky. If I can have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Motion is second to approve the sale of the Boss V plow for three hundred dollars to Rod Hooky. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have an approval of a dump, dump truck bid from, uh, Sourcewell, which is the National Joint Powers Agreement, that cities and governmental agencies can tap off that bid to, to purchase items without having to bid themselves. The bid, or the recommendation is purchase a dump truck from Northern Tri- Truck and Equipment for a hundred and fifty-one thousand five hundred and forty dollars. If I can have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Motion is second to approve, uh, dump, dump truck bid from Northern Truck and Equipment for a hundred and fifty-one thousand five hundred and forty dollars. Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Okay, moving forward underwater and sewer, we have, uh, several contracts needing approval here. First one is a contract from WSP for analyzing sustainability assessment of the Split Rock Aquifer. This is an amount not to exceed seventy thousand dollars. Can I have a motion to approve that proposal, contract? Have a second?
Second.
Motion is second to approve the contract with WSP for a sustainability assessment of the Split Rock Aquifer, not to exceed seventy thousand dollars. Any questions from the council?
If I understand this correctly, this sets this up for the next forty, fifty years to make sure that there's adequate.
Correct. WSP has done some work in studying Split Rock Creek. This study will take a look at, um, the areas with the highest probability of, of finding water, number one. And number two, as we move forward with another proposal later on tonight with water rights, we're starting those conversations with DNR. This will also give us some information, just in case, at least how much the Split Rock Aquifer is recharging, if, if DNR has those questions.
So then with recharging, this would provide us the information that we need to quieten any fears from people making speculation that there isn't enough there?
Correct. It will look at the sustainability recharge, how much water is available, how much is recharging, and where the, the, the best spots to drill wells are at, because, you know, we can't, we just can't go out there and start popping holes in the ground at, you know, twenty-five thousand, fifty thousand pop. We want to make sure that if we're going to start drilling wells, that we've got a, a good likelihood of, of finding that water.
So this is our due diligence.
Correct. Raleigh can.
Again, though, this is good due diligence that we do so that people can't put anything out there that's saying that we didn't do what evidently they thought we were supposed to do, or something like that.
Okay, any other questions? If not, all those in favor of approving the contract with WSP for a sustainability assessment of the Split Rock Aquifer in an amount not to exceed seventy thousand can signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The second contract with WSP is for a split walk, Split Rock Aquifer well sampling and analysis in an amount not to exceed nineteen thousand three hundred dollars. Can I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Motion is second to approve, any questions?
I would just add, this echoes my previous.
Turn on your mic, Chuck.
Sorry, this echoes my previous comments, it just provides us the due diligence that we're doing what we're supposed to be doing. People can't come back and say, well, you didn't do this, didn't do that, it gives us some good due diligence to do on the radiant levels.
Correct. It, it's, it's testing, uh, water quality in existing wells, so that we can, we'll know where the, the best quality water is at within those sweet spots. So that, once again, we're not out there drilling wells, um, and coming up with, with water that we don't want or not enough. So that, like you said, this is due diligence, it will test the water quality in, in a number of aquifer wells. And it gets into a little bit of detail as to how the aquifer is split with sand veins and shale, et cetera. But it will, it will certainly give us better ideas to where the screens, the screen should be placed in those wells.
And, and I think one of the misnomers of, um, our whole water development process has been that we don't have enough water, which is incorrect. We have plenty of water, we just can't push it through our system. Correct, Raleigh? In twenty seventeen, when we were pushing so much water, our treatment plant just couldn't handle it. So we are in the process of upgrading that and working on that, but I would caution anybody to say we don't have enough water, because that's just not true.
Do I have a motion on that one?
Yep.
Okay. Any further questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number F three is, uh, approval of Pay Application Number Five to H and W Construction for two hundred and fifty-two thousand one hundred and fourteen dollars and twenty-six cents. If I can have a motion to approve Pay App Five? Motion is second to approve Pay App Five to H and W. All those, any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. F four is to approve Pay App Number Five on the Water Main Looping Project to Blacktop Paving in the amount of forty-six thousand one hundred and sixty-six dollars and forty-three cents. If I can have a motion to approve that?
Move to approve.
Motion is second to approve the Pay App Number Five to Blacktop Paving, forty-six thousand one hundred and sixty-six dollars and forty-three cents. All those, any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I would just add this one that we just approved to Blacktop Paving is a three-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand dollar total contract that is essentially complete. Uh, there'll be some more payments, but the actual job is essentially complete, along with the next one, which is approval of Pay Application Number Five to Sioux Cup Construction for three-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand four hundred and thirty-six dollars and thirty-four cents. If I can have a motion to approve that?
So moved. Second.
Motion is second to approve Pay App Number Five for the Brandon Park Edition project to Sioux Cup Construction. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Due to, uh, flood problems is item number F six, which is the Aspen Boulevard Force Main Pay Pro- Application Number One to Metro Construction for, in the amount of a hundred and seventy-seven thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars and twelve cents. If I can have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Carl Jorgensen. Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That project is the project that, uh, people would recognize that's going out by the golf course underneath the river. A four-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollar project that is progressing quite well.
Yeah, the sewer is already connected, and then water should be tomorrow.
That's progressing quite well, then. Very good. Item number F seven. With all the flooding and, uh, weather stuff that we've had, I'm, F seven is the engineers getting involved in the, uh, amending of contracts due to all the problems with weather. There's a amendment to the DGR con, DGR contract on that Force Main project out by the golf course to add twenty thousand two hundred dollars to their contract for a total of fifty-five thousand five hundred. If I can have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Motion is second to approve the amendment to the DGR contract for engineering fees on the Aspen Boulevard Force Main project. Any questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item F eight is the AE two S proposal for water rights coordination in the amount of four thousand eight hundred and sixty-two dollars.
As contained in their report, um, and, and part of the WSP contracts, if you notice, there's a map in there that shows, uh, future areas where we need to expand to get additional water rights into the Split Rock Aquifer for our fifty-year growth potential. Nobody on staff has much experience with water rights, which is a whole different item or animal. So AE two S has experience working with DNR to get those water rights approved, making the application, going through the process. So we're recommending that we retain them to assist us in, uh, obtaining those additional water rights.
Can I have a motion to approve that contract?
So moved.
Motion is second to approve the water rights coordination contract in the amount of four thousand eight hundred and sixty-two dollars from AE two S. Any further questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. A well-spent five thousand dollars. New business, we have a lot of financial reports from our finance officer, Christina Smith. Any comments, Christina, or concerns? Any questions from the board, council? If not, we are at the end of our agenda. If I can have a motion to adjourn it.
Mayor, I would request that we go into a brief executive, uh, session for an update on some litigation.
Okay, I, I would prefer that we have those delineated when we approve the agenda, but I will make the exception, and I'd like to know about those beforehand. So if I can have a motion to go into executive session at six fifty PM. Motion is second to go into executive session at six fifty PM. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.